Okay.
Where were we?
Okay. Good evening. Excuse me. I'll call to order this town plan and zoning mission meeting for March 14th, 2023. We can start with the meeting minutes from February 28th, 2023.
Move to approve?
Commissioner Francis moves to approve.
Second.
Second Commissioner Brayman. Commissioner Francis.
I read them.
Additional comments? That looks goo- yeah, they look good to me as well.
Same.
Um, Commissioner Ford is remote. Any comments from the commission on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. See, six hands. Commissioner Harrison, are you?
I was a little abstaining, I wasn't at the meeting.
That's fine, okay. My mistake. So, six hands and then Commissioner Harrison abstains, passes. Six zero one, I guess. We have our P O C D update. Mr. Went.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted this as a placeholder. I did communicate through email with the, um, with the agenda packet that our next public engagement session, we did meet, as you recall, with our consulting team and discussed a draft outline of the plan. Our next step is a public open house. It was scheduled for Thursday, April the 20th. That's going to be at Osborne Hill School. We will do some promoting of that event soon, but I just wanted to let this commission know that that's the next step. It's not going to be a commission meeting per se. It's going to be a, an open house for a presentation and then dialogue with the public. And obviously, you are all encouraged to be there, but it's not going to be an official planning or commission meeting. But that's going to be Thursday, the evening of Thursday, April the 20th. And we will, more, more info to come, but I just wanted to make that announcement so you guys can put it on your calendars and we'll be promoting.
Osborne Hill. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Harrison.
Um, will the public be able to give feedback?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, yep, yep. That is the purpose of the opportunity to do a presentation and then there'll be folks there for, to have conversation and feedback from the public, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments from the commission? Okay. Moving on to three, two, one. Reef Road. Request of Attorney Chris Russo on behalf of Phoenix at Reef Road Corp. For review of the modified roof line for an approved project in the neighborhood design district. Mr. Went.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. In May of last year, the commission approved a special permit application for additions and alterations to convert what was an existing medical building to a nine-unit residential building. You may have passed by it on your way down here. It's the blue facade. The applicant seeks to revise the roof line on the south side. If you're looking at the building from the street on the right side to facilitate the installation of solar panels. Uh, it's not, we're not here to discuss the approval of the solar panels. They can do solar panels as a right, as a flush mount to the roof, but in order to facilitate that, they're proposing to remove three of the five roof dormers that were on the original south elevation to accommodate that. Uh, the, um, there were architectural drawings included in your packet. Emily and Scott up on the screen, the proposed facade in the next one down, that was the original facade. The, the two gables on the end, on the left and the right, will remain. And the three gables in the middle are proposed to be removed in order to create a flatter surface to facilitate the solar installation. Um, the front, rear and north side, which is the left side of the building, as you look at it, will remain unchanged. So really, the question for the commission's consideration is whether that proposed change is consistent with the original approval or whether this proposed modification warrants a revised special permit application to be filed. Um, I have nothing further pending questions from the commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Went. Commissioner Ford?
I'm recused from this application through your call.
I, I did not, so thank you for the reminder. Who's up?
We will go with, uh, Mr. Bukowski.
Thank you.
Ready or not, you're in.
Commissioner Braun.
I have two questions.
Well, let's get a motion on if we can, please.
Motion, um, to approve.
To approve without a, a hearing, I guess, is the proper.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is up for hearing, is that?
No, no, no.
The question is whether or not you think this is consistent with the original approval or whether you think the change warrants a brand-new application.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to approve, but I have some questions.
Which is fine.
I might change my mind. I got it.
Okay, so motion to approve is to approve as consistent with our prior approval. Do we have a second? Commissioner Levy, thank you. Commissioner Braun.
Okay, so here are my questions. Number one, it looks as though, I mean, I love solar, it's great, but does this create a glare problem for the neighbors? It looks like it's angled towards anybody along the south side. I don't know who's along the south side, that's one question. The other is, it looks like the elevation changes as you go from the street side to the backside, it goes downward, not a problem, but I'm just wondering why that is? And is that a design change? It kind of looks like it might be. And, um, just to reconfirm, there's no change in the footprint, no change in impervious surface, no change in the height. It's actually, the height, it looks as though what you're doing is you're filling in the space between the gables with solar panels. So you're actually making a more
Correct.
solid-looking roof line than it was because you're filling it in with, you're taking down the gables, but you're filling that in with, with the panels, it looks like from this picture, anyway.
Yes. Yes, on the last question, with respect to the glare, these are typically grayish tones, so they generally don't create a glare problem. I think it's important to note here that the vacant lot to the south of this project, this commission approved a nine, a nine-unit development a couple of meetings ago from the same developer, so it's going to, the, the solar panels are going to be facing his next phase of development on the adjacent.
This is the first one, then, that's closer to Post Road.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Um, the change in elevation, if you go back to that other, um, view in line, that, so if you recall, there was an existing footprint of a building, so the first six units are the existing brick building that's being clad in wood with a third story. The three units to the rear are the addition that was approved. So it turns out that they stepped that down a couple of feet from the original building, but the footprint is the same as was approved, no increase in impervious surface. Um, and if I, I think I, if I missed one of those questions, let me know. I think I covered that.
Yeah, so the, my only concern is that it's making it solid where it used to be gabled, so it looks.
Yes, if you go up, take a look again, this is the, the image you see there is the proposed, if, and then if you slide it up in line to the.
They used to be all like gabled.
That, that was the original, so the three gables in the middle are to, proposed to be removed. The gable on the far left and the far right will remain.
On one side, there was a roof in between them?
Yes, correct.
So the re, so that line that goes across the top of the, that's not.
That's the ridge, the line that goes.
That always was there?
What's that?
Okay, that was, that is a solid line, then.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not really increasing the solid appearance of, of the height.
It's not changing the height of the building at all.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, as Commissioner Francis said, it's only on, it's only on the south side, only on one, the north side elevation remains unchanged.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Levy?
Uh, I think aesthetically, I prefer the gables, but environmentally, the solar panels are a plus. Review of the plans, it doesn't change the square footage, the interior development, so it's basically a limited design change, which I think is consistent with the application that we've already approved, and therefore I would not see any further special permit or hearings on this matter or a new application, and would move to approve it as revised.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Brayman?
Uh, thank you. I agree that the addition of solar panels is something that's appropriate for this site and something that we want to encourage, and I think that the, the change to the aesthetics or, you know, the architecture is, is minor and is warranted.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
Just a comment, I appreciate that they're only putting the roof on the, the south side and not on the north side, so they are retaining the gables as you drive down Reef Road, which will be attractive.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I agree with the, with the other commissioners I've said, and I just had one quick question around the slope of the roof, so is it, is it nearing the other side as far as like the slope, or is it a flatter roof? I can't really tell from.
It is, if you go back to the, the original proposal, that slope between the gables remains the same. What, what's being removed is the, the projections that, that come perpendicular to the.
No, I understand that part, but I'm asking, the slope that is in between the gables on that side, does that same slope happen on the other side?
It does.
With the, with the.
It's the same, yes. It, it does.
Thank you. That was my question.
Any other member of the commission? I'm, I'm in support of the, the motion as well, and simply the fact that it's going to be, these will be facing another development of the, of the developer's own development south is practically helpful as well. All right, can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye, raise your hands. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. New application to recommend a public hearing. Two seven seven dash three oh one Berkeley Road. Zoning compliance application of Berkeley Road LLC pertaining to a forty-unit residential building pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Stat. Excuse me, statutes, the B zone.
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman, beyond what's noted here. Uh, this is likely slated for an April, um, public hearing. That's all I have.
Hearing is required. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
Move to public hearing.
Second Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Levy?
Required.
Yeah. Commissioner Harrison?
Required.
Yeah, agreed. Any comments, or can we put this to a vote? Commissioner Ford, I think you're back up, right? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Old Business, one ninety Sherman Street. Special permit application of McKenzie Real Estate Group LLC pertaining to the construction of a detached garage in the Center Design District. Mr. Went.
Just before I start, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Harrison, are you voting on this item from la, that was heard last time, or, or?
Uh, I'll, I'll.
Were you, did you present, did you review the video from last?
I didn't, I haven't been able to yet.
Okay, so is it an abstention, or do we just bring somebody else?
No, we would just bring in the.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I do plan on watching it.
No, of course, yeah, because I know we've got, um, uh, spot on, exactly, yeah. So that's fair. You're back on deck. Um, Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, the existing structure on this site was originally a dwelling that was converted to office back in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, in December of twenty twenty-two, the zoning board of appeals granted variances to allow the conversion of that dwelling back to residential use as a single-family dwelling and setback relief for this proposed detached garage. So the applicant is seeking to construct a detached two-car garage with a home office solely for the use of the residents of the dwelling. Uh, since the site is commercial district, a special permit is required. Uh, there was, in the records submitted at the last meeting, uh, some material, some of the zoning board of appeals variants that had signatures from all the adjacent residential neighbors in support of the application. Uh, the considerations for a special permit are found in section twenty-five point seven point seven, is the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such character as to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values in the neighborhood, to preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and to avoid undue traffic congestion. Uh, that is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun?
Motion to approve.
Approve, Commissioner Braun. Second Commissioner Francis. Commissioner Braun?
I think it satisfies all the criteria. First of all, we have, um, neighbors that were in favor of this. It's gone back and forth a little bit, as I recall, last time it was refusing. I don't know if it ever was ever actually used as an office, um, but I, I think it satisfies all the criteria, so I would, I would support it, approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
Yes, I agree, I think this would be an enhancement to the neighborhood, and it's restricted to home office use only, so that should be fine.
Commissioner Brayman?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with all the comments, uh, so far. Uh, I hope that the property gets put to good use under this configuration. Um, it's definitely appropriate for residential use. Uh, it satisfied my concerns about what the intended use was for the, um, space above the garage, that it wouldn't be commercial or, you know, accessory dwelling unit, um, you know, which would require a different consideration, so I'm in favor.
Any other comments from the commission, or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Zoning compliance, one eleven Black Rock Turnpike. Zoning compliance application of Ellis Riley to establish a restaurant and liquor service facility on an existing built, in a existing building in the Design Commercial District. Excuse me. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the subject, this is a one-point acre property in the Design Commercial District. It's on the westerly side of Lower Black Rock Turnpike, directly across the street from BJ's Wholesale Club. The building has an industrial past, however, it was most recently occupied by Planet Fitness Gym, and before that, Boston Billiards. The applicant seeks to establish a brewery restaurant in the existing building. A total of sixteen thousand square feet of patronage is proposed, including approximately two thousand square feet of outdoor occupancy. There are one hundred and thirty parking spaces shown on the current site plan. Uh, additionally, customers will have access to the fifteen-hundred-car Metro Center parking lot, um, adjacent to the train station, which is in close proximity. This access is facilitated by a license agreement with the Connecticut Department of Transportation, as well as a pedestrian access agreement across the adjacent parcel at eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike. Um, the proposal entails the provision of a pedestrian walkway from the Fairfield Metro parking lot across the rear of eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike, and that's depicted in the file links. Um, that is a picture, the, there, there we go, there's kind of a depiction of the, the fenced, uh, walkway. And it's interesting to note that, uh, if, if you park where that white Jeep is and, and take that pathway, it will actually be a, a lesser distance to path of travel than the far end of the parking lot, uh, to the proposed brewery. So I think there's convenient access, and clearly, there was a variance granted by the ZBA here in June after a public hearing, and, um, in, in light of that availability of the adjacent parking lot was a big consideration, uh, for the board's consideration. Uh, no new parking is proposed on-site. Uh, the existing parking lot is existing, however, there are thirteen new shade trees proposed between the existing sidewalk along Black Rock Turnpike in this existing parking lot. And in the file, uh, there was a letter of support, um, from the Economic Development Director Mark Barnard addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, but, uh, we concur with those sentiments in that letter and, and believe that this is an appropriate site for this use and represents a really, in our view, an exciting addition to the mixed-use residential-commercial neighborhood that's emerging around Fairfield Metro. So I'm happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Brayman?
Um, I would move to approve the compliance application. I did have a question.
Yes. Is there a second? Commissioner Levy? Commissioner Brayman?
Thank you. Um, so I agree with the comments, uh, at least stated by staff. I guess my only question is whether we need to attach the same conditions to our approval if we were to approve this at the ZBA, attach to the variance, which is that, that the applicant has to get, um, you know, DOT approval for the parking spaces at Metro, and they have to get the easement from the neighboring property. Yeah, I, I don't think that's an issue because it is already a condition, there is the blank, the unexecuted lease appended to the materials that, that were included in your agenda packet, um, so it would not be at odds with the ZBA approval. So if you see fit to do that, I don't see any issue with that. Thank you.
I have a question. So the easement that we have here, is that over the private property at eighty-one? Or the easement between Edward Reiner Trustee?
Yes.
And Invest Two?
Correct, if you.
That's the, that's the one over the private property at eighty-one, right?
Correct, there's a, there's a view of that, I believe, that shows it in red. If you keep.
And eighty-one is the same property that had a concept review that we saw about developing another, not four, but just a housing complex?
That is correct. There's this, there's a. I think, yeah, right, whoops, back, back, right, next one, stop, right. If you zoom into the, if you can, you can see the area in red. Maybe just.
That's what direction is?
The, the roof of the building, you can see the, 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 this is an area, obviously, and you can see the roof of the building labeled Planet Fitness on there, and you can see the concrete slab that's on the adjacent Reiner piece, and that red dashed pathway represents the pedestrian, proposed pedestrian pathway from the Fairfield Metro parking lot to the rear of this site.
The building between, is that where that other concept review was going, that other?
Correct, there's no building, that's a concrete slab in that photo, there's no building there now, but yes, that is the site that, that you did see a concept review planned for, yes. And the applicant, that applicant, uh, has been working with this applicant jointly to provide that access, they're aware of each other's plans and are working together for joint access.
So they have an easement where that's across eighty-one's property, which goes along the train track?
Correct.
And we don't have an easement, or we, we do have some kind of an agreement with the DOT, or we're waiting for that?
No, the, the applicant has an agreement, will have a license agreement with DOT. You could argue that they really don't need it, because it's a, a public parking lot, you don't need DOT's approval to park there. You can park there today to use the train station, after five o'clock, it's free, which they anticipate the, the bulk of their need is going to be after five o'clock during the week, certainly, uh, but, uh, they asked the DOT, and DOT is preparing a license agreement. So, um, you, you could argue that you don't really need a license agreement to park in a public parking lot, but one is being executed.
Because it's, I mean, they got a variance from four oh two to one eleven spaces.
Correct.
That's a big drop, and so all this parking for this brew pub would be a sort of an L shape, where that building is on the upper right?
The parking, if you go back to the site plan, the parking itself, uh, there's a, an existing parking lot, uh, of a hundred and thirty spaces or so on the brew pub site itself. It's the additional parking beyond, the onsite parking that will be facilitated at the Fairfield Metro Center lot.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I would, uh, approve this, it's a definite enhancement to the property. I think it's consistent with the development in that area, the proposed development, and what we hope to see at the Metro Center, so based upon that, I, and I, I think with the, uh, easement and the license agreement, whether needed or not, there will be more natty with parking, so based on that, I would approve it.
I have another question.
Commissioner Braun?
Um, did this, does this satisfy two things? Every time we have a hearing, I get an email from Melissa Israel, who used to be on the commission. She wants to know if it satisfies bike ped regulation, as well as the shade, seems like it satisfies the shade tree regulation? Because that's fourteen for a hundred and nine spaces, that's like one per ten, I think?
Correct.
And the properly spaced, does it, what does it have to do to satisfy the bike ped regulation?
Um, well, the bike ped regulation requires that there be pedestrian access from the street sidewalk to the entrance to the site. Um, I think that can be easily accommodated here with some striping of a pedestrian crosswalk type walk, if you want to implement that as a condition, I think that would be appropriate. Um, I don't know whether or not, um, this would, they're showing a bike rack, but you could also include the provision for a, a bike rack.
Yeah, is it, are we at, I mean, if we make, what kind of modifications do we have to do, does that require more information?
No, I don't, I don't believe.
Can we just say, subject to complying with bike ped regulation for having the, what is it, the?
Right, typically, it would be a, a striped crosswalk type pavement marking from the public sidewalk to the entrance to the facility.
Doesn't it need a bike pathway also?
No, no, it, it requires facility if someone were to, to, to arrive here on bicycle for them to park their bike.
So I would, I would suggest that we should make that a condition of approval, that it satisfies the bike ped, right, since this is in sort of our TOD area, right? We're in.
Yes, I, I think that it's fair to say, and we hope the case is, that many of the folks that are living in these surrounding residential apartments will walk there. So yes, I think that would be an appropriate condition.
Is there anything for pedestrian that would change the way, that's bikes we talked about, is there a pedestrian, there's side?
No, I think the only thing is, is just emphasize where, uh, you know, by pavement markings and paint, how, the pedestrian path of travel from the, from the public sidewalk. And that's, I think, easily for them, easy for them to accomplish.
It's okay. Commissioner Francis?
There's no sidewalk on that side of the street, is there?
Well, the public sidewalk over the Black Rock Turnpike Bridge is on the BJ's side of the street. There is a sidewalk, there's an asphalt sidewalk, uh, along the Black Rock Turnpike frontage here, but if you're at Trademark, for example, you know, if you're coming over the bridge, you're going to be on the other side of the street and then cross it. There's a light, there's a traffic light at the Black Rock Turnpike driveway opposite BJ's, so there's a traffic light there that will allow folks to cross.
Would there be any reason for us to require a sidewalk in line with future development?
Well, there is a sidewalk, an existing asphalt sidewalk along the Black Rock Turnpike frontage, I think that there will likely be, uh, in conjunction with the next phase of development on the adjacent parcel, which kind of wraps, wraps around this, is to create a more, uh, side, formal sidewalk on Ash Creek Boulevard itself. But I don't think that that's necessary as part of this application.
Usually, we require concrete sidewalks in new development.
But there is one.
Yeah, well, again, this is exist, this is an existing.
No, it's asphalt, but I mean.
It's, yeah.
Which is much more required, because you have to link. They have to.
Um, okay, there was a request, I think, for amendments, uh, and I, can you restate the request again, Commissioner Braun, I apologize?
Okay, I guess it was.
I'm sorry, I don't mean, I, what I first, is, is that you want the, the, the same two conditions as are imposed by the ZBA about the license agreement and easement, you want the pedestrian, that was suggested.
Bike ped regulations.
You want, you want.
I was.
Right, you want a pedestrian, uh, pathway established by appropriate pavement markings from the public sidewalk and the provision for bike racks.
Yeah, and if there, if there's a, that's the only thing for bikes, just the bike rack provision, or is there, yeah, okay.
Bike rack for a brewery restaurant?
Yeah, sounds good. Better than driving, right?
I don't know. I guess.
I don't know, maybe the employees.
That's fine, um, I'm not sure, do we need the First Amendment for the, uh, T, uh, ZBA conditions?
We probably, we probably don't need it, but it may be, we just put it in as belt and suspenders.
It's fine with me. It's, it's your motion, so if you might make the, the amendments as stated, just stated by staff, that's fine with me.
I agree to both of those amendments.
And who's my second? Commissioner Levy, Commissioner Levy?
I agree.
Okay, so amended. Any other comments from the commission? I mean, very exciting op, uh, proposal, I mean, somewhat of a interesting litmus test of this, uh, our, uh, economy, Fairfield's economy, to get a brewery restaurant, especially in a site that we're really looking to try to, um, develop. We've got a lot of conceptual thoughts and proposals put forth in our way in that area, and this strikes as a very, very good catalyst potentially for really seeing that move now. So. Any other comments, or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. Nine thirty-seven Post Road, zoning compliance application of Ken Camaro for outdoor dining at an existing restaurant in the Design Commercial District. Mr. Went?
All right, Mr. Chairman, this is the first of the. All right, Mr. Chairman, this is the first of the COVID protocol, outdoor dining permits seeking now permanent establishment. Tony D's is a sports pub on the Post Road. It's out in front of the Bob's, it's between Midas, it's next door to Midas, if you know where that is, out in front of the Bob's Plaza. They have approximately three hundred and twenty square feet. It's in the rear of the building. This is not occupying any parking spaces. It's behind the building. There's a brick pathway, walkway that provides access out the rear and around the building. There's a, there's an existing chain link fence that encloses this area. And behind that chain link fence is the parking lot for the Bob's Plaza. So it meets the four hundred foot limitation that doesn't require any additional parking. It's not occupying any existing parking spaces. You actually can't even see it from the parking lot because it's to the rear of the building. There's a picture, I think, in the packet that we included for you. And I don't have anything else unless you've got any questions.
Thank you. May I have a motion from the commission?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Commissioner Francis? A second to not on the head.
Oh, sure.
Second from Commissioner Raymond. Commissioner Francis? Sorry.
I think this will be a good addition, and it meets all our zoning requirements with the expanded dining regulations from a few months ago. And the only thing I would remind the applicant of, and whether we need it as a condition of approval, I don't know, is no sound is to go off your site. Granted, in this case, it would only be into a parking lot, but you're not, they're going to have televisions at this point, maybe some day music, who knows? But, you know, you have to keep it very constrained.
Yeah, we can certainly implement that as a standard condition that you have imposed on all other outdoor dining facilities.
Well, we're gonna, let me ask you, do we, should we be attaching the regular standards?
Well, a couple of them now no longer apply.
Sure.
But the seasonality piece is no longer part of the mix and...
Annual review?
We can do the annual review, yes, and no outdoor music or sound system, yes. In this case, because it's to the rear of the building and an enclosure, I don't see the need to have furniture removed in the off-season, but I'll leave that, well, actually, we don't have a quote unquote off-season.
Yeah, no, we don't.
So, so I think no outdoor music or sound system and subject to annual recertification would be appropriate.
Okay, very good. We'll add those as conditions of approval then, Commissioner Francis?
Excellent.
Commissioner Raymond?
Yes.
So amended. Commissioner Raymond?
Uh, yeah, I think this is a perfect example of outdoor dining setup that was instituted during COVID and worked without any adverse impact on the neighbors. It was obviously, you know, benefit to the restaurant, and they'd like to continue it under our, you know, updated regulations that we just amended to facilitate this kind of economic activity. And I think it's a good thing, and I approve.
Any other comments from the commission? Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearings, and I call them together. The zoning regulation amendments, application of SPON, Fairfield LLC to amend section twelve point four, point twelve of the reg, of the zoning regulations, and twenty-two sixty-nine Post Road special permit application of SPON Fairfield LLC to establish a veterinary hospital including dog boarding and dog, and daycare, excuse me, in the Design Commercial District. So, just to recap where we are, we are at, we are in public comments. I have the list that we've been, where we've had and been using for the last few meetings. We will go through this list. This is the list we started with, the first hearing to organize the, for public comments. I'll go through this list, and then after this list is done, reopen it up to people outside of the list who either have not yet spoken or who have spoken but wish to speak on the new materials that were submitted at the last public hearing. That will apply first to the people in person, and I will go to the public that are just joining us remotely. I understand that an issue has arisen on the applicant's side. They've asked for their rebuttal to happen at the, not tonight, but the tomorrow, the next meeting, for the reasons given, it's fair, and that's what we'll do, and considering the public comment portion anyways, I'm not sure if we would get to them tonight anyways, but the point and the hope and the expectation is to get through the public tonight, hopefully get through the public fully and completely, so we can wrap up with rebuttal next time. So that's the hope and next, well, the hope and potentially the expectation. Many of the public has been submitting things, their comments via email. We've received them, and I have, and I know personally I have reviewed them. Anybody on the commission who has not yet, I'm sure they will. That is always our practice to be up to speed. If anybody has submitted comments via email, it would be helpful not to come up and repeat and just read those comments via email, as we have a lot of other people to get through. We've also had a lot of public comments, and a lot of topics have been addressed. So there has been no time constraints. That's not our practice. I would just suggest that in the interest of time and timeliness and getting through people to avoid being as repetitive as we can, we've heard certainly about the dog noise and the barking and the pitch, you know, certainly can repeat that quickly. If there's new information to hear, certainly want to hear that. But, you know, we've had many hearings and a lot of public comments. If we can, you know, I said, no public, I have not yet, we're not going to institute a limit at this point. But I think it would be fair to say, be mindful that we're not being too, you know, being too repetitive and too verbose. If we can be concise, I think that would be helpful. But again, I, those are suggestions. So let's start with, and I apologize for any mispronunciations, but Kate De Torre.
What happened? What's matter? What's matter?
No, if she's remote, we'll go through this list like I said, so.
I'm going to be coming in person, and I can speak when I get there.
That's fine, just identify yourself, please, the person up front, Mr. Decker.
Thank you.
Sue Demayo, Demayo. D E M A I O. And if anybody, for whatever reason, misses their chance now, they're not excluded later. I'm just going to go through this list and then reopen it up. Not seeing Sue. The check marks, Mr. Winter, people have spoken, right?
No, the highlights are...
The highlights have spoken, okay. Hugh Stein? Not hearing anybody. Chris Mcapeng? Come on up, sir. You can just state your name and your address, and that would be great. Thank you.
My name is Chris Mcapeng, and I live at fifty-one Overhill Road with my wife and two kids. Thank you, and good evening. My property is about, did I say fifty-one Overhill Road? I think I did. My property is about two hundred and fifteen feet from the site at two twenty, twenty-two sixty-nine Post Road. We've lived in Fairfield for twelve years, and we chose our home largely because of the neighborhood and the location. My kids love to play in the yard, walk to the neighbors' houses, we have a neighborhood block party every year. So I'll just kind of, in the interest of time, I'll kind of...
And feel free, if you have something prepared that you want to submit via email, that's just as fine too.
Sure. I know that Dr. Putter's engaged with Mark Barnhart, who stated that this is the only location available right now in our town that meets the criteria outlined by Dr. Putter. While I believe that Dr. Putter's list of criteria could probably be altered to include other available locations, what's undeniable is that there's a big difference between a location meeting his criteria and a location being ideal. Just because there are no other locations currently available does not mean that this proposal is a good idea. I suspect that everyone in this room will acknowledge that this is not an ideal location for this business, because if it were such a slam dunk, we would have been having this conversation two and a half years ago, when the site was vacant and when Dr. Putter was beginning his location search. But instead, we're here now after Dr. Putter has submitted failed bids for seven other better locations and apparently feels he has no other options. In many ways, I have sympathy for Dr. Putter, but he finds himself in an unenviable position that could have been largely avoided with greater transparency. Had he reached out to the neighbors before he submitted his proposal to the TPZ, or had he submitted his proposal to the TPZ before any money was spent on renovations, he might not be in the uncomfortable financial situation he described to us and would have realized all the issues that come with trying to put a dog daycare where one is not allowed and does not belong. However, changing the zoning regulations of our town is not a suitable remedy for Dr. Putter's situation. Having the residents of our town bear the burden of the applicant's poor planning and lack of transparency is not the right way to resolve this. On several occasions, Dr. Putter's team has pointed out that if we prevent this dog daycare from opening in this location, then we might be stuck with something much worse. In response to that, I say, we're willing to take that risk. Dr. Putter and his associates do not need to worry about what could theoretically open here or how it might impact us. This location will not always be vacant. We do not want it to be vacant. There are countless businesses that I and the rest of the neighborhood would welcome, as we did with the car dealership before. And I'd like to point out that there's an opportunity cost to allowing Dr. Putter to open this, in this location. Turning this into a contentious dog daycare prevents something better from opening in our town, possibly even owned by a resident of our own state or even our own town. Dr. Putter wants us to be afraid of what could be a worse situation, but I believe we have the right to hope for things to get better, and it's really not hard to imagine any number of better suited businesses to fill this location. Another argument that we've heard repeatedly from Dr. Putter's team is the allegation that there are other vets in Fairfield that do not follow the existing rules. I don't have enough information to judge the merit of these claims. If these claims are false, then that argument is moot and should be disregarded. But if there is some truth to these claims, then the applicant's team is actually just highlighting how difficult these zoning laws are to enforce. Putting into place a complicated set of rules and requirements for the applicant to follow...
One more, one second, sir.
Sure.
Just because it's...
Sure.
Excuse me.
No problem. Putting into place a complicated set of rules and requirements for the applicant to follow without strict enforcement or meaningful repercussions for violating those rules is a recipe for disaster and one that is irreversible if you vote in favor of the proposed zoning regulations. In fact, this proposal is wildly inconsistent with the Fairfield TPZ's Plan of Conservation and Development, which provides the framework that guides zoning decisions. Section three of the plan describes the recommended actions for supporting each of the revised planning goals. I'll read some relevant excerpts. Section three point one, point five of the Environment and Ecology Chapter reads, quote...
Sorry, just give us a second.
No problem.
Need to be on the record.
All right.
Sorry.
No problem. Section three point one, point five of the Environment and Ecology Chapter reads, quote, "Assure control of pollution, including non-point source pollution, and maintain a high standard of environmental quality in all relevant aspects, air, water, noise, and appearance, by appropriate action of local, state, and federal government," end quote. A high standard of environmental quality with noise specifically mentioned in the TPZ plan is clearly not achieved by these zoning changes. Section three point two, point four of the Community Appearance Chapter reads, quote, "Recognize that codes and regulations have an effect on the appearance of the town and ensure aesthetic considerations be part of all regulations and codes," end quote. Sound and odor are clearly aesthetic considerations that should be considered. Section three point two, point thirteen of the Community Appearance Chapter reads, quote, "Improve the basic character of existing neighborhoods and commercial centers," end quote. Our entire neighborhood agrees that this will not improve our neighborhood. Section three point three, point three of the Housing Chapter reads, quote, "Viable neighborhood structures within a strong community framework to help maintain town identity," end quote. Creating tension between the residential and commercial communities and diminishing the property values is not a recipe for building strong communities or a desirable town identity. Section three point three, point six of the Housing Chapter reads, quote, "Implementation of a neighborhood improvement program to assure the long-term maintenance and stability of neighborhoods," end quote. Again, our neighborhood is not more stable as a result of this. Chapter three point ten, point five of the Economics Chapter reads, quote, "Designate sites with proper access for appropriate economic use that will not be detrimental to established residential areas," end quote. This seems self-evident. Section three point eleven, point one of the Social Services Chapter reads, quote, "Continue to improve public health services within the community," end quote. Others have already outlined the detrimental public health impact that comes from living next to this type of facility. And it's worth pointing out that the Town Plan of Conservation and Development divides Fairfield into eleven distinct zoning areas, and eight of those eleven areas contain DCD zoning that abuts residential zoning. So this zoning change would have town-wide ramifications well beyond this one location. At previous meetings, Chairman Noonan has probed for information as to why we could not use the exact same approach here as was used for Dogtopia. I would like to highlight several key differences between this location and Dogtopia that differentiate between the two situations and warrant different treatment. The first difference is the number of residents connected. Dogtopia contains just over five thousand square feet and is located underneath one and two-bedroom apartments. These apartments range in size from seven hundred to a thousand square feet. So if it's five thousand square feet, you can fit about six apartments on top of it. If there are two to three people in each of these one or two-bedroom apartments, then we're only talking about maybe fifteen residents. Contrast this with the hundreds of residents that are directly affected by the spot-on location and the thousands that would be affected by the townwide nature of the change, including over a thousand petition signatures. And it's clear that the stakes are much higher, and the margin for error here is much lower. The second difference is that Dogtopia's residential neighbors are all renters. If the sound of the nearby kennel is a problem for a renter, it is much easier to move to a new apartment than it is for an owner to sell their home. Clearly, all residents deserve zoning protections, but homeowners have added financial impacts from reduced property values and from finding a buyer interested in living next to a dog kennel. Third, the residents living next to Dogtopia are less likely to be working primarily from their homes, and therefore less likely to have their work impacted by the dog noise during the day. That's because these apartments have smaller square footage than the homes surrounding spot-on, presumably making them less conducive to having space dedicated to a home office. And considering that Dogtopia is located right next to the train station, safe to assume that it appeals primarily to commuters who are not home during the day. And since this building was just completed in 2021, its residents moved there with a better understanding of whether they would need to work at home or in the office as compared to someone who's lived in their home for a decade and suddenly unexpectedly found themselves working from there full-time. And fourth, Dogtopia was built at the same time as the apartments. Prospective tenants presumably would have been aware of it before deciding to rent there, whereas here, the kennel is being forced upon an existing neighborhood without consent. And finally, as my neighbor Kate will explain in more detail, there are plenty of noise problems for neighbors of Dogtopia. The safeguards and regulations in place for Dogtopia are not doing enough to protect the unfortunate neighbors in that location. the unfortunate neighbors in that location, and they will not be enough in this location. Before I finish, I just want to remind everyone why we're here. We're not here because we could make a lot of money if this gets approved. We're not here because our boss asked us to come. We're not here because we're architects, engineers, or experts. My neighbors and I are here because we care. We have nothing to gain from all of this and everything to lose. We're tired, we're stressed, and anxious. We have all neglected important things in our lives because this has taken so much of our time and energy. No offense, but we don't want to be here. But we are here, and we'll continue to show up, keep fighting, because we want to protect our town and its residents and to preserve our neighborhood and others like it across Fairfield. I urge you to reject the proposed zoning regulation change, and I thank you for all your time, attention, and patience.
Thank you. I understand...
Bailey is online.
Who is?
Hugh Bailey. Could you call him on the...
Hugh Stein.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hugh Stein. That's correct.
Okay, so I understand Hugh Stein is online. If he's online, that's, we'll go to him. Next up is Devin Santa, but Hugh Stein right now.
Hugh Stein is here.
Great. Go right ahead, sir. If you can just give your address, go right ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Noonan. My, you know my name. I live at 38 Overhill Road. I am here also in opposition to Spot On's application. It's my fourth time attending one of these conferences, so it's nice to see you all again. This is getting old for me, so I assume this is getting very old for you. But I think we're all pretty committed to this, and we'll see it through. So I do appreciate the commission's patience with us and willingness to understand and appreciate our concern. But when this whole thing started, I thought my goal was to hopefully reach a outcome where it would be some kind of compromise. After I've heard from all the speakers and the hardships, I just don't see how there is any compromise for Dr. Putter in this location. Certainly, I hope that he can find a location in Fairfield or the surrounding area that is suitable, but as in a direct butter, I just don't see how a piece of property that's surrounded on three sides by residents, by family, family with children, I don't see how that would be an appropriate use of that property. Many other businesses that can go there, and we're not anti-business in any way. I understand the economic development of Fairfield is an important task, just as the Planning and Zoning Commission is, but this would not be an appropriate use of that piece of property. I, we've heard from a lot of speakers, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about anything that you've already heard, so I'm just going to touch on a few points. I think the proposed zoning zone and the attorney who spoke last time, the woman who spoke from the Stanford attorney, talked a lot about the DCD, and I hadn't given that much consideration. But a big part of the reason my wife and I moved here 20 years ago was because the charm and appeal of Fairfield was obvious. You know, the warmth and character of the people, the beachy vibe, it was all there. We felt, right away, we felt like this could be a home. Then we turned onto Overhill Road, and the people are, kids are out in the street and people raking leaves. It was the fall. It just felt like a real hometown for us. My concern is, and when you move to a town like Fairfield, you hope that, or you assume that there's going to be a commission like this one here that's going to help you or protect you as a resident in terms of safety, but also preserve that charm. So my concern was that when I heard about this Spot On application, that this would change the charm of the DCD zone. And I think that's my one issue that I want to talk about because there are so many other health, ecological, financial...
We lost him. Hold on a second, sir, we lost you. Is he on mute?
Yeah, I think somehow or other you muted yourself.
Uh, are you, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes. Thank you.
Okay. I don't, I don't know how long I was talking, but without you hearing me...
Just a second.
Okay, good. I'll just say that the changing the charm of the DCD zone, I think, would be a decision that you look back on and possibly regret years to come. It's really putting Fairfield on a slippery slope where other exceptions could be made, and before you know it, you're going in a different direction. This town talks a lot about its downtown area, and you know, we're all very proud of it. It's a great area, a great town to walk around in, and I just don't want to see anything compromise that. And where you, this location is sitting on the entranceway basically to the downtown area, at least if you're traveling from the south. So as I mentioned, there are several reasons why I'm in opposition, but I just don't think this is the right reason, given that it, right, right place, given that it's surrounded on three sides by residents, and it's also on the post road as opposed to, say, the Stanford location, which is back further in a industrial residential, commercial area. This is right there on the post road where you're coming into downtown Fairfield. It just changes the whole tone and look of Fairfield. I have concern with that. So as I said, those are the reasons I'm in opposition, and as in a butter, I wanted to make them clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is Devin Santa, and then on deck is Beth Santa.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. My name is Devin Santa. My family and I reside at 10 Overhill Road. I think it's very fitting, we're here tonight at the fire training facility. We bought our property from the former town fire chief, Dave Russell. So very fitting, we're here. So thanks for the opportunity to speak and express my concerns. Frankly, I urge the commission to deny this applicant's petition to radically change the zoning regulations and our town. And for the commission's considerations, I'd like to discuss three items. Investments, some of the computational modeling that was used by the applicant's expert, and the proposed modifications. On the topic of investments, I note at the first hearing, the applicant was lamenting his investment, and I believe he noted he was leveraged to an uncomfortable point and was invested with consultants, designers, experts, and the like. I'd imagine that would be expensive for the applicant, but on the topic of investments, this investment was made in the wrong place. It was not zoned for what he's trying to do. That was no mystery. You know, who else made investments in this area? All the people who've been here talking in front of you, the residents that abut this property. These people purchased homes and improved homes in these areas and made investments in an area properly zoned. I did a quick review of Vision Appraisal, just looking at the immediate area, just looking at Overhill, Fairfield Place, Northfield, Southfield, all the near shot of this facility. That's 70 homes, 70 families. Appraised value of all those homes is $40 million. If a proposal in front of you is approved, it will ruin these investments of these 70 hard-working families who invested in properly zoned locations. For what? For one business. For one business that's not properly zoned. Second point I'd like to make is about acoustic modeling, and there was a, the original hearing, the first hearing, is a big presentation from Tenor Engineering Group, and I read that with great interest. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and while I don't specialize in acoustics by any stretch, I do have well beyond the layperson's knowledge of computational modeling. And there's a saying that anyone that's involved in computational modeling knows that all models are wrong, but some models are useful. The point here is models can be manipulated and/or misunderstood, and we're talking about modeling something as chaotic and random as barking dogs. So with that axiom in mind of all models are wrong, some models are useful, and my engineering background, I did, I did read Tenor's report with some interest, and some things stood out at me. Dog barking is not codified by any codes or ordinances, the noise levels associated with barking. As quoted by Mr. Miller Klein, it's understudied, and there's been no study, federal funding or study on that since 1981. So effectively, that means the applicant can propose whatever level of dog barking noise he deems appropriate for the model. Again, it's not codified. Digging a little deeper in that, because I deal in codes and standards quite frequently, and I find it interesting that we can propose something that's not codified that would infect so many properties, I noted that the dog barking level was based on a single 24-hour, 24-hour analysis of a facility in Scottsdale, Arizona. One single case. This doesn't seem to me to represent statistical sampling. How many dogs were there? Were they Chihuahuas? Were there Outweilers? We don't know. It was one, one case. So knowing models have their weaknesses, I think it's important that, certainly myself, but the commission and interested parties think about it critically. What we have is many pages of fancy color noise impact contours that we've all seen. We showed the maps and showed the noise contours, saying that 20 to 30 dogs less than 100 feet from someone's backyard will not be heard above ambient noise. That's a conclusion in there. To quote the report, quote, "These instantaneous maximum sound level barks are predicted to be quieter than a diesel truck and bus passing on US 1." That's the conclusion from the report. Personally, I have no confidence in the case, thinking about this critically. Dogs barking in Scottsdale, Arizona, maybe they're quiet. I don't know. But to think that a dog barking 100 feet away from someone's backyard and a truck passing 300 feet away on the post road is the same or quieter, I don't think is, maybe the model would suggest that, but my personal experience would suggest otherwise. So if we're talking about changing zoning regulations based on, in part, this report from a consultant stated the dog noise is understudied, I think would be somewhat irresponsible, particularly when the zoning regulation has these far-reaching ramifications. I'd also like to talk about, my final point with respect to the amendments that we've seen of late, which quite frankly, I haven't studied in detail because, and I think my neighbor, Mr. Mackbrank talked about this, we're all spending a lot of time looking at this. We have lives and homes and families and jobs to do as well. So I apologize if I haven't really unearthed the amendments, but what I understand, the applicant has amended to limit the number of dogs outside. I have a tough time squaring this in my head because I've been to all these hearings. I was at the first hearing, I heard, I heard Dr. Putter talking about how keeping dogs inside was, was, quote, "Bad for the dog's enrichment and quality of life." It was, quote, "Not fair to the dogs and was inhumane." So I don't, I don't understand how this is a good project. I don't understand how the proponent of this project believes the project at present isn't humane to his, his clients. It, it seems that it would, it would bring up an issue, an issue of how is this policed? What is, what is indoors? What is outdoors? Are the garage bay doors open? Are they, those dogs effectively indoors, but their barking can be heard outdoors? I don't believe that these amendments are going to, are going to solve the issue at hand. We're still going to have these issues. So I think the popularity of this town for residents, for businesses, for visitors, for students, it's a testimony to you all on your commission. It's a testimony to what you do and balancing what you have to balance and how you do it. That being said, what we have in front of us is a planning process. As an engineer, I'm familiar with the planning process, and this is a townwide planning process, and it seems to me it's being handled on an app, a single application basis. You're being asked to change the zoning regulation to affect the whole town to the benefit of one landlord and one tenant. You've heard the outcry from the town residents and not just the neighbors. You've heard it from the 1,200 signatures, and you saw the map of where that is throughout the town. If it's determined the town wants to impact its balance of peaceful neighborhoods with increased commercial activity, this needs to be discussed on a townwide basis. This shouldn't be discussed on an application-wide basis. We have zoning laws in place to prevent these conflicting uses. We have a planning process in place for amendments of town law on a, on a townwide basis. This should be used, not, not done on an individual project. There was a suggestion early on from, from someone that this is a case of an imbue of "not in my backyard." This is what the regulations are for. Yes, "not in my backyard." The regulations say, "not in my backyard," because that's not the right use for that backyard. So not in my backyard, not in your backyard, not in any one of the town's backyard. That's what the regulations say. So thanks for indulging my time. In conclusion, the proposal at hand will ruin our neighborhood's ability for quiet enjoyment. It will. It'll devastate our investments. It'll set a precedent that'll allow this to happen through town. Please let the zoning laws stand as they are, deny this application. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Beth Santa, and then on deck is Laura Lavelle.
She's next.
Okay. Do you...
Kate's here, Kate's here.
Okay, well, then Kate will be up next then, and then I'm not sure if Laura Lavelle is online, but at least we'll go to...
What was her last name? I'm sorry.
Lavelle, L-E-V-E-L-L-E.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Kate would like to speak last, so she's here, but she's going to come to the next meeting, but we can just put her at the end of the list. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, sorry, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Beth Santa, and I live at 10 Overhill Road, approximately 200 feet from the proposed dog hotel with my husband, two daughters, ages 12 and 15, and my one-year-old black lab. During the first hearing, there was a lot of discussion regarding the applicant's character, so I thought I'd take an opportunity, which I don't think has been done, to share publicly insights about the character of our existing neighborhood and residents. Well, I think we've heard about the character of the neighborhood, so I won't really delve into that, but I do personally know that those who will be devastated, devastatingly impacted by this proposal, should it go through, serve the town in the following ways. We are your Fairfield High School teachers, your PTA presidents. We coach American Little League games and teams. We serve on the Harbor Management Commission. We are active on the FUSA Board, and we are parent soccer coaches. We are key sponsors of fundraisers like Pequot Derby Day. We recruit teams for the Connecticut Challenge Bike Ride. We volunteer at Wakeman. We run in the Fairfield Half, and if we sign up on time, we run in the Colony Hot Oil 5K. And we also run in the Pequat Runners Thanksgiving Day Race. We sing at the town Christmas tree, Christmas tree lighting, and we cook and serve meals for the vulnerable populations who visit Operation Hope. We are part of the fabric that makes this town so special. If the conversation of this proposal is about character, I would say that the longstanding residents of this neighborhood are exemplary examples of the town leaders and volunteers. We are not obstructionists. During the first hearing, the applicant and his team were also suggesting that there is a huge need for a vet and dog hotel immediately adjacent to residential properties. Not to date myself too much, but when our daughter was in first grade, my husband and I volunteered for Junior Achievers, and one of the first lessons for the children was explaining the difference between a need and a want. I'm pretty confident these six-year-olds would agree that protecting the peace and health of a neighborhood is a need. Many of my fellow neighbors have talked about the existing public health concerns, as well as highlighted the existing state and town regulations, which are in place to protect this need and ensure that commercial interests are harmonious with the neighborhood. My first graders would probably say a veterinary facility was also a need. However, when I told them that there were already three veterinary businesses located less than two miles from the proposed site, I would surmise they might suggest this need has been fulfilled. But as I asked them, and I take this directly from the Spot On website, if a luxury dog hotel... hotel that features wrought iron expansive beds with plush bedding, chandeliers, in-suite forty-inch flat-screen TVs with animal programming, and a personal webcam to check on your pet, which comes with a minimum price tag of a hundred and fifteen dollars a night for your pet, was a need or a want, I'm pretty confident this would not be in the need category. As I stand before you, my neighbors and I are potentially facing having their basic need for a quiet enjoyment of their homes derailed by one business. A business that I consider a luxury, a business that only pertains to Fairfield residents who own a pet, more specifically a dog, and who have the economic means to afford this high-end service. In the first hearing, an hour and thirty-two minutes in, Dr. Putter stated, and for frame of reference, I know that if this were my home, I would be, also be concerned. Commissioners, this is my home, and I am more than concerned that we will have seventy-seven plus dogs as immediate neighbors, and the zoning regulations currently in place to protect our neighborhoods townwide is at jeopardy for a business that at, at best is a want, accessible only by those who have a dog, with the means to afford this offering. I am concerned that should the zoning regulations be amended, this will be done in haste, without the due process, conversations, and analytics necessary to fully evaluate if this amendment is in the long-term best interest of the town. Why would we consider this amendment? For one business and one property owner? Is this how town planning is done in our town? I highly doubt that, because of the success of this town, the popularity and the variety of offerings that this special place has. This is why we all moved here. This is why we're here tonight. This is why you are here on the commission. So we certainly have witnesses that there are support, and contrary of amending this zoning amendment, we oppose this zoning amendment for many reasons. So I respectfully request that you deny this application and maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods and protect the existing zoning regulations. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Hey, huh? Is there Laura, Laura Lavelle? Not Rob McKenzie? And after Rob McKenzie on deck is Petesia? Petesia, P-E-T-E-S-I-A? No? All right, well, we'll see.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. I'll keep this very short. My name is Rob McKenzie. I live at ninety-four Northfield Road, which is about five hundred feet from the property in question. And like my neighbors, I'm opposed to your issuing a permit for making any changes to the current regulations. I share a lot of the same concerns, but where we are right now is we're trying to blend what is a kennel with a hospital, and they're two different businesses, and they have different capacity constraints, right? To grow a hospital, you need veterinarians, which are highly trained people, or you can't degrade quality. You're gonna get malpractice suits, you're gonna get, you're gonna lose your license. We're not worried about the hospital side of things. We're worried about the kennel side of things, where imagine that it's a vacation week, and ten extra people come up and say, "Please take our dogs. You know, we, we really want you to take our dogs. We're desperate. We're going on vacation." And whatever parameters you put on the kennel side, they're gonna possibly blow through those parameters, because they have all three ingredients for, for doing so. They have incentives, they have opportunity, and they have rationale. So incentives, they can make more money. Opportunity, who's gonna police this? If it's inside, is it the neighbors? The neighbors hear dogs barking, will report it, but after that week, what's gonna happen? Somebody's gonna come by and they'll be back to seventy-seven dogs, or whatever the limit is? So, and then the rationale, of course, is that they're saying, "Oh, we're gonna help these people out." And that's a dangerous combination. What you have is a business that could potentially go beyond whatever parameters you put on it. So ultimately, what this is, is a great neighborhood, and you're putting a kennel in the middle of it. And I really ask that you reject the permit for this operation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just in case. Okay. Greg Beretta? Heather Dubrowski? Dubrowski, excuse me?
I am, I'm online.
Sure.
So my name is Heather Dubrowski, and I live at seventy-five Millendale Road. I'm also a third-generation Fairfielder and a current city member of the Affordable Housing Committee in Fairfield. My father lives at one thirty-one Fairfield Place, a house that my sister, who is in the audience, and I grew up on, and he has owned that house for fifty-two years. Throughout that entire time, this neighborhood has peacefully and harmoniously had a wonderful relationship with all of our commercial neighbors. We have supported them, we have encouraged them, we have rallied around them. Even with XIDE Battery, we were part of that solution. We, we weren't, you know, we weren't being, fighting it, we weren't trying to say, "Hey, you're taking down this big factory." We were like, "You know what? How can we help you fix a problem?" And that's what this neighborhood does. One of the things that's so special about this neighborhood, that again, my father has lived in for fifty-two years, is that there's very little turnover, and that isn't by coincidence. It's because we respect and support all of our neighbors, commercial and residential alike. We are not against business. We, because we know that there are laws to protect us, and we want to make sure that any business that comes in is welcomed with open arms. As everyone has said, we don't want there to be any negativity. We don't want there to be a negative impact with anyone, whether it be our residential or commercial neighbors. We're here to protect our quality of life, and we are very concerned about noise pollution, light pollution, traffic and safety, and we're also very concerned about the dogs. I also have a dog, and I can't imagine, you know, taking one dog out at a time to go to the bathroom and not having free space to, to run around in. By changing our zoning laws that protect the residents, you will be creating a townwide statement that the residents' rights are second to commercial businesses, and that's not what Fairfield is about. So I ask you to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Wright? After her, Jeff Levitt. Erica Wright? Jeff Levitt? Jim Cohen? Cohen, excuse me? After him, Peter Ellenberg? Holly Justin, or Justin Contrato? Roman DePilka? Nelson, was it Wok? K-W-O-K? After Nelson, Don Hyman is on deck.
Oh, Don's there. Okay, so I'm Nelson Cork. I'm one of the neighbors at one-one-three Fairfield Place. When I moved in, after these people were there before me. I've been in this house for twenty-two years. Chief Russell was my, one of my neighbors. So is Tom Dubrowski, who's still around. This is not the place for this facility. We have located at least three or four places, actually, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back. There's one perfect location for this place, Kings Highway, which I sent to the commission. Open space, it used to be a car dealership. There are two cemeteries right next to it, nice and quiet. No one's gonna get, no one is going to be affected by dogs. In our neighborhood, we've got about, I sent you the, the aerial of this neighborhood. It's a beautiful area. We've got the Sasko River, I think it is. It's just all residential. This should not be in this facility. We would welcome another car dealership, stop and shop, anything, Trader Joe's, anything that actually improves the neighborhood for the neighborhood, not just for a business owner who can draw people from Westport. But, what did we say? Seventy-five hundred a day by three sixty-five days a year, that's good, that's big money. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't help us as a neighborhood, as a town. It helps one business. And this is not what this planning zone, um, commission is about. It's about the town. I end my case.
Thank you. Don Hyman, and on deck, Rob Rosania?
I live at sixty-one Northfield Road. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-four with my wife, and we've raised our two daughters there. I'm here tonight because I'm a member of a group called the Alliance for Peaceful Fairfield Neighbors. It's a big name for an informal organization of people who are all united to oppose the zoning change that's before you and the construction permit that's before you. We've had five months of almost endless texting and emailing and phone calling and street chats about this subject, and we are talking not only among ourselves in our neighborhood, but with people all across town, and we are all united in our opposition to plans to change zoning laws that would protect us from development of dog kennels that abut peaceful neighborhoods like ours all across Fairfield. As you've heard, well over a thousand people have signed the petition opposing this zoning regulation change and the kennel. Commissioners, you have read our emails, listened to us. Your questions reflect an understanding of our fears about an application that morphs into another bad shape every few weeks, but is still the same wrong-headed idea. Whether the dogs are inside or outside or both, by law, this giant dog hotel doesn't belong on land next to a residential neighborhood, and in prior testimony tonight and on the other nights, you've heard the reasons why. Maybe in another commercial area of Fairfield, maybe a place that abuts train tracks or ninety-five, maybe land that is very safely removed and out of earshot from a residential neighborhood, maybe a place where dogs in Fairfield can be outside and enjoy fresh air and sunlight, a pleasant, open-air place where seventy-seven dogs can be dogs and not at the expense of families living in neighborhoods like ours, or many other neighborhoods in Fairfield that abut commercial zones. A well-run place where dog owners like ourselves would be pleased to bring our pets, not simply a big box, nicely painted, indoor dog garage with a decent HVAC system. Commissioners, we thank you for your diligence, for your fairness, and the civility that has characterized these hearings. It's no small thing. We don't take it for granted. We're grateful. A key question at this moment to me is, what has been learned by all concerned? Knowing what is now known today, would these same applicants make these same applications again, now that they know what they know, hear what they've heard from lawyers, from engineers, and certainly from residents like me? What has been learned? For your convenience, I've compressed the public, professional, and legal opposition to these proposals into a short, tight list. I promise, it takes five minutes. Here are the top ten reasons why you must vote no, both to the proposed zone change and to the permit application presented by SpotOn. Reason one, this vague and virtually unenforceable zoning regulation is a Pandora's Box. The scenario can, if, and if need be, would repeat itself again and again if other doggy daycare businesses come to town in areas like ours. Reason two, the dog hotel potty place proposal with supposedly one-at-a-time dog walking behind a closed-off nine-hundred-square-foot enclosure is built on self-regulation. It can't be enforced. Ask your zoning enforcement officers. Don't take my word. Seventy-seven dog food eating and water-drinking dogs. Do the math. And would SpotOn staff start walking dogs in our neighborhood? Would they take dogs to open space areas down the road on, in the Pine Creek Marsh area? When all is said and done, what's to stop them? Reason three, whether the dogs are inside or outside or both, are walking to and from owners' cars. Dogs bark, and we have lots of dogs in this equation. This is not another dogtopia. Acoustical engineer Kevin Peterson has testified that nuisance dog barking will be heard at annoying levels in our neighborhood. He said the dog hotel doesn't belong here. Reason four, what about waste odors from seventy-seven dogs who may not be thrilled to be hotel guests? What assurances are there that SpotOn methods could really solve this? Reason five, what have your peers and colleagues in local government been stating to you in their emails? I'm talking about Fairfield's Director of Public Health. I'm talking about the Chair of the Westport Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm talking about several RTM members, State Representative Jennifer Leeper, and others. All of these government officials, all of them question the idea of changing zoning protection that's been in place for decades that prevent this very kind of proposed development, where, apart from a handful of satisfied SpotOn Stanford clients, is the massive call for support for this zoning change and building project. Reason six, we have a trust issue with Dr. Putter and colleagues. Sure, plans change. Sure, they've heard our objections and know this has become a widely reported and at times contentious discussion. But what about the well-being of dogs, as we've seen these plans devolve from outdoor runs next to our homes to an antiseptic indoor confinement? In business, sometimes we make moves that don't yield immediate advantage, but create down-the-road opportunity. Is there a chess game in progress here? Change the zoning protection that's in place now? Come back another time after you've softened up the ground? Kennel boarding is a, is the high-profit margin component in this discussion, and that's a fact. Reason seven, as stated a few times, well over a thousand folks have signed petitions. That's a big block of votes. This discussion will be fully reported in the news media tomorrow, most likely, as it should be. This is not about nimby, as others have said. This is about not in anyone's backyard in Fairfield or any other neighborhood. Reason eight, we're not going anywhere. Our alliance supporters live here. Our alliance has resource, determination, several legal options, and a means to fight this here or in court. Unlike some of our dogs, we won't roll over. Reason nine, it doesn't have to be this way. Dr. Putter, if you're watching, you can cut your losses. Hopefully, our Economic Development Director has been enlightened by these discussions. Mark Bernhardt's comments March second at the Economic Development Commission have been widely circulated, and Mark, if you're listening, you have not made any friends in our neighborhood. Four words stick in our minds, "But I don't live there." Why can't this economic development discussion get restarted? What about the property at Joe's Bar and Grill on the Post Road? What about the property at Joe's Bar and Grill on the Post Road, as was mentioned by somebody else, by the King's Highway property near the cemetery? And there's so much open land on the east side of Fairfield across some BJ's that doesn't abut residential neighborhoods. Why can't the town help Spot On find another location that is legal under existing law, not next to residential neighborhoods, and still profitable for an investor like Dr. Putter? Reason ten, thanks, Mr. Linochi, but there isn't enough arborvitae in Connecticut to mitigate the sounds of seventy-seven barking dogs, whether they are inside, outside, or some blend of the two, or getting walked one at a time at the potty place. Mr. Linochi, you're absolutely entitled to make a profit on the commercial land that you own. You've had numerous tenants on that property over the years. You've hardly heard a word from us. Find a tenant or a buyer whose business doesn't involve barking poop and pee next to our homes. You would be surprised how our mood and tone will change. Commissioners, thank you for your attention. And please, with all due respect, as our attorney Ben Proto said earlier at the last meeting, don't undo all the good this commission has done over the years. Remember all that's been learned. Please reject these proposals. Any questions?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Rosania. Doug Banquer, Banquer, B-A-N-Q-U-E-R. Dave, oh, do we have somebody? Up next, uh, on deck, Dave Fury, F-U-R-E-Y.
Hi.
He's online here. He's up next.
Uh, Doug Banquer, one oh-three Fairfield Place. I firmly oppose this, uh, Spot On application. Feel like it would degrade our neighborhood. Um, I have large concerns about the noise. I had sent you a letter about, uh, a study that was done in Indiana of dogs producing about three-quarters of a pound of waste a day. If you do the math, probably about five-hundred pounds a week, two-thousand pounds a month, twenty-four-thousand pounds a year. It's a lot of poop. It'll fill up this room. Um, there's concerns, so, uh, I hope you take this seriously and vote on behalf of the residents of Fairfield and support us as a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Fury.
Um, he's actually not available.
Not available. Okay. Uh, Kate, is it Casatoria? Uh, I mispronounced it, I'm sorry.
That's me, I'm gonna be wrong.
Well, you're at the end of the list, and once I get through the list, I'm opening it all up against everybody. Then Ellen Kelly. Okay. So, going through this list. Oh, did I miss somebody?
No, this is Ellen Kelly walking.
Oh, your name, man? Is, this is the list, the first night we had people sign up, and I know we've had people sign in as we go, so I don't see you. What was it again, Susan, what?
She's not on there.
All right, I don't see the name on here, and obviously you'll get a chance. Go right ahead.
Hello, thank you. Uh, my name is Ellen Kelly, and I live at one thirty-one Sasko Hill Road, um, with, with my husband and, and two children. And most of what I wanted to say has been covered and very eloquently this evening and in the past three meetings. And the main thing I ask you is to uphold the zoning. We count on you. We, as we said, we support the businesses. We couldn't get, we've watched many different businesses come into our town, particularly at the end of our street, um, most, most recently with Goro Botanica. Um, the residents support it. We support the car dealership. We support something coming in there. We just don't support the zoning changing, and we ask that you uphold the zoning. Just like in the summertime, the beach, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we don't allow pets for sanitary reasons and to disturb the enjoyment. Dogs bring all the issues that we've discussed in great detail. And again, we support a, a business there. We look forward to what comes in next, um, and we hope that Dr. Putter finds a different location. It's just, again, zoning, I didn't think we'd even have to go for a meeting because there is zoning in place. So it's been very educational for me to, to be part of this process, and I hope that the commission does not approve this application. Any questions?
All set. Thank you. All right. Having gone through this list, I will, oh, no, it's already open, but I'll ask anybody else who's present to speak. Susan, why don't you jump up? And then, um, I don't know the best. We'll, we'll do our best kind of going from my left to right unless there's some considerations. Um, I really don't want to start another list if I can avoid it, I think.
Good evening. My name is Susan Seats, and I live at one eighty-six Fairfield Place. I've been a Fairfield resident for ten years. I truly adore my home and my neighborhood. I spent a lot of time finding my nest when I moved here from Weston, where I lived for twenty-plus years. I have been a full-time Realtor for eighteen years. My team, which is under the Compass umbrella, has offices in Westport and Fairfield. One happens to be next to the proposed Spot On building. We sold over two-hundred million in volume last year alone. I'm telling you this just to give you some perspective. I don't just dabble, I live and breathe real estate. I can tell you that with absolute certainty that if you allow this application to go through and Spot On opens, you have just depreciated the value of the abutting home and the surrounding neighborhood by a huge percentage. The neighborhood will be tainted and become known as that neighborhood behind the dog place. In a scenario where I am working with the buyer and looking in Fairfield, I would caution them of not buying a home that was affected by a business such as Spot On. Not only will the quality of their life be in jeopardy, but the resale of the home will always be a problem. On a personal level, I work a lot of hours, usually seven days a week. When I'm home, I have some time off and the weather is nice. My absolute favorite thing to do is to enjoy my backyard. My adult children, who live in New York City, come to visit a lot on the weekends, especially in the summer. They enjoy my little pool and the oasis I've created. In fact, they often tease me on a beautiful Sunday day and ask, will I be getting any time in my oasis? I can't imagine this getting ruined by barking dogs and smells that will carry. I'm a dog owner and I love dogs, and I know that you simply cannot control the barking of seventy-seven dogs indoors or out. Not only do smells carry, but noise carries too. Is it realistic that they will walk one dog at a time? Dr. Putter originally talked about how in, outdoor time for a dog was so important, and now suddenly it's not? I'm trying to understand why this committee would even consider changing zoning laws that have been in place for many years to protect its residents and put the needs of one business owner over the hundreds of Fairfield residents that will be adversely affected by this application. Will the town be committed to shutting it down if they are constantly in violation? Will we neighbors have to police the situation and call in when there's a violation in progress? Perhaps a special hotline will be needed just for Spot On complaints. Thank you for your time this evening, and as I close, I implore you to please consider the emotional health and financial well-being of the hundreds of tax-paying residents that will be adversely affected by Spot On if they were to open. I ask you, would you be okay with them in your backyard? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, it was Ellen Kelly. No, I'm sorry. Susan, can you just say your name again, please? I'm sorry. Steve. All right. Uh, next, come on up. Why don't we have somebody speak, and then there's a, a chair underneath a whiteboard we can use as our on-deck chair, so to speak? So, yeah, let's, sir, you can start, ma'am, on deck, and then that way we can see who can go and...
Mr. Chair, I also have one person who wants to speak remotely.
Okay.
So you know after. I let them know after.
Well, why don't you also in the chat say if anybody needs, wants to speak online, please sign up so we can get that queue going as well? Hi.
All right. Uh, thank you. My name is Thomas Keys, and I live at fifty Fairfield Place, and my property abuts the facility. I've lived in Fairfield for thirteen years with my wife and three children. I'm a teacher and an active member of the community, mostly serving as a coach in just about every youth sports league in town. My wife spoke a few weeks ago about how this business would negatively impact our family and our neighborhood. And although there have been changes made to the proposal, I want to be clear that we strongly oppose the changes. My, my neighbors Olga and Roman Dopilka at thirty-eight Fairfield Place have also asked that I speak on their behalf. They have been my next-door neighbors for thirteen years. Olga watches my kids before school or whenever my wife and I are in a pinch, and in return, my oldest son and I shovel their driveway when it snows. This is the type of neighborhood that we moved into, and we hope for our neighborhood to stay this way. Olga has lived in Fairfield since nineteen forty-nine. She moved here when she was three years old, when the Ukrainian club took in six families from the Ukraine. This was just after World War II, and her family was fleeing the grasp of Stalinist Soviet Russia. She attended Sherman School, which used to be located where the gazebo is downtown. She's a lifelong resident, and her and her husband bought their current house at thirty-eight Fairfield Place in nineteen seventy because Olga's sister Irene had already lived a few houses down. They raised their three children in that home, and now I witness their grandchildren also visiting the home regularly. Roman is elderly. He had a hip replacement a few years ago and does not have an easy time leaving the house. His only time he leaves the house is to go to doctor's appointments or sometimes to go out on the back porch and sit and enjoy the, enjoy the fresh air. This business is absolutely going to ruin that for him. Both of our houses are close to the main entrance of the proposed facility. The dogs entering and leaving the building all day long will also be making unsettling and continuous noise in our residential neighborhood. Although there was a change to the amount of dogs outside, there will still be seventy-seven dogs projected to be indoors. We will continue to hear them and the noise that will still impact our daily lives. The audio recording previously submitted of a similar indoor facility is proof enough of this. The current laws protect our neighborhood and every neighborhood in Fairfield. Normally, I'm all for compromise, but in a situation like this, I have to explain that any change to the zoning laws that protect us will be opening the door to a much bigger issue immediately and down the road in our town. Although Dr. Putter and his team have made statements about what a great guy he is, a major red flag for me was waived was an entire, when his entire business philosophy did a complete one-eighty in regard to dogs needing to be outdoors. But for the sake of argument, let me say that he's the best vet in the world. What happens if you change the laws to allow this business to open in our residential neighborhood? What happens if ownership changes? What happens if this business is successful and we don't hear a sound, but another one opens up in town and they aren't so lucky? What if it opens and in a few months, Dr. Putter adds a service to his clients that allows the dogs to get taken for walks around our neighborhood, like in his Stanford location? You changing the law now will have a domino effect on issues forever. To be fully transparent, it's shocking that this has gotten this far. Going back to the beginning, Dr. Putter was showing a property that was completely inappropriate and currently illegal for the purposes he wishes to use it for. What was that conversation like? Don't worry, we can change the laws. Is filling this vacant building so important that we would put tax revenue over the quality of life for the residents in the neighborhood? And for all neighborhoods that abut, uh, commercial properties in town? The current zoning laws protect us and they should continue to. I want to thank you all for hearing the countless speeches from our neighborhood, and I look forward to putting this to rest once and for all. Thank you.
My name is Amy Palladino. I live at one oh-one Overhill Road, which is, I believe, about five-hundred feet from the proposed, uh, business. I'd like to start by thanking you all for your continued and thoughtful attention to the concerns raised by residents who oppose the Spot On proposal. Two and a half weeks ago, I had knee surgery to repair damage done over a lifetime of playing team sports. Earlier today, FedEx delivered to my house a recumbent exercise bike signaling the end of my athletic career. But I'll always carry with me the lessons I learned playing team sports. I learned the value of hard work that goes into every win. I learned that if you're there for your teammates, they'll be there for you. And I learned to respect the rules of the game regardless of your winning or losing. Sadly, I also learned that not everyone respects the rules of the game, that some people think it's okay to bend or change the rules to save them from losing, which is a betrayal to everyone else playing the game. My brother used to change the rules all the time. Imagine my frustration, hitting a wiffle ball homerun past the lilac trees, only to have my brother, the self-appointed arbiter of rules, move the homerun line back to the fence so that his team, who couldn't hit past the lilac trees, didn't lose to my team, who could. Betrayal. So that was wiffle ball, and we were kids, and the stakes are much higher tonight. I bought my house in Fairfield in the spring of twenty-twenty. I played by the rules. I wanted to make some structural changes, so I submitted my plans to the town and followed every single requirement that came back. This included, to my surprise, the installation of a water runoff system. For the life of me, I couldn't wrap my head around that condition because I didn't change the actual footprint of my house, which usually triggers such a requirement. But I had added square footage to the second floor of the house, so that's what the town demanded. The runoff system was installed. At the time, it was a serious drag, but in hindsight, it was a small price to pay for my wonderful home and a lovely neighborhood in a town that is committed to looking out for the greater good. I played by the rules when I moved to Fairfield. I didn't ask anyone to change them for me, and I didn't make up my own rules. I knew what I was buying into, and I wanted to be part of this community, and every last one of the reasonable rules that have served Fairfield residents well for years made it a place I want to live. Now, Dr. Putter is asking you to change the rules for him in a way that threatens to have a negative impact on neighbors across Fairfield. As so many of us have said, we are not anti-business, we are not anti-progress, and we are not anti-dog. But we see no reason to change zoning regulations to allow for an intrusive business that would alter the quality of life in our neighborhood and potentially other Fairfield neighborhoods. We see no reason for this commission to betray more than a thousand residents of Fairfield who have signed a petition or written a letter in opposition to Putter's plan. No reason to betray us by changing the rules in a way that would benefit a single business and have a negative impact on so many residents. This is a business that does not belong in or alongside a residential neighborhood, not ours and not any other in Fairfield. You have repeatedly asked residents who live closest to the proposed facility whether fully enclosing the dog spaces would make it okay by us for you to approve Spot On's application. Our response has been no. No, because the issue isn't just about barking. It's about the environmental and health impacts of super HVAC systems and pounds and gallons of dog waste to be disposed in dumpsters placed close to a butters backyard. It's about the influx, influx of flies carrying disease to backyards throughout the neighborhood, and it's about traffic causing further backups on an already overflowing post road and spilling onto our neighborhood streets where our children play. But more importantly, no, because the decision to change this regulation and approve Spot On's application is not up to us alone. We would simply be the first to suffer the impact of this change. We said from the beginning that this isn't simply about those of us who live close enough to twenty-two sixty-nine Post Road to feel the immediate impact of the business. This is about protecting neighborhoods throughout Fairfield. It's about protecting hundreds of voters living well beyond barking distance of twenty-two sixty-nine Post Road who signed the petition opposing this change. We're very grateful that you're listening to us, but as you consider the decision before you, we need you to listen to them as well. Furthermore, and sadly, we see no reason to trust that Dr. Putter, if given the opportunity, would not immediately and completely betray us by ignoring town rules and the vague guidelines put forward in his plan to deal with the noise, waste, and safety impacts his business would have on the neighborhood. He has changed the rules, even his own rules, before. What would stop him from doing that again? For example, he has broken his own good neighbor rule by letting several barking dogs outside his Stanford facility before seven AM and in temperatures below his own humane threshold. He is shielding himself from transparency by turning off or simply not fixing the cameras monitoring his outdoor dog runs and stamping. the cameras monitoring his outdoor dog runs in Stanford. At the same time, he learned about opposition for his plans to open a facility in Fairfield. He was complicit when his landlord sent introductory letters to abutting neighbors about his new high-end vet business that are deceptive by omission as there was no mention of kenneling or dog daycare with outdoor play areas. He exposed potential neighbors to piles of dog waste by hiding it around a room in which he hosted an initial meeting to build community trust. Let's call that a failed attempt. Given the above, do we trust Dr. Potter to ensure there won't be multiple dogs outside in the ginormous potty run, playing and barking continuously throughout the day? Do we believe he won't open the bay doors and windows so he can give the dogs fresh air, a lack of which he previously claimed was a non-starter for his business? Or do we think he will change his rules the minute he opens shop? Commercial dog boarding isn't allowed in our town. It's inappropriate for this business to be near so many homes. We're beyond wiffle ball. At stake tonight is the peaceful, odor-free, and waste-free neighborhood that every single Fairfield resident deserves. At stake tonight is the faith we have in our elected officials to protect that which our town already deems in the best interest of its residents. All we're asking is that you continue to uphold the rules that have served Fairfield so well. Please don't betray us for Dr. Potter's interests. He has not by any stretch of the imagination earned the trust we've put in you. Thank you.
My name is Tim Zano. I was born and raised in Fairfield. I live about a football field away with my wife and five children. I want to thank, I want to say thank you to the commission members for your work here. I also want to thank my neighbors for bringing the relevant concerns about this development to light during all these hearings. I want to leave you with two, just two simple points. Think of your homes, think of your neighborhoods, think of your parents' homes. Think of your parents' neighborhoods. Would you want a pack of dogs barking indoor and outdoor adjacent to your home or to your parents' home? Finally, the Post Road is an historic, is a historic road and the reality is many sprawling neighborhoods abut it. Your fellow citizens live there and a super majority of them oppose the location of this development. What does that tell you? I could confidently say that a super majority of them support smart development and many worked hand in hand on the successful One Sasko development. There is a major disconnect here between the citizens and the and the development. It's simply not a smart development. So I ask, like my fellow neighbors, basically 100% of them, that you oppose the changes to the zoning law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, commissioners. My name is Mary Lizca Halloran. I live at 44 Lindbergh Court and I've lived there since 1993. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the spot on facility on Post Road. My interest in this matter is to preserve the quality of the neighborhood and all of the near and the value of all the nearby properties, which presumably the goal of our zoning regulations, which clearly prohibit overnight kenneling. The mandate of this commission is presumably to ensure compliance with the law. The proposed use of the facility is not permitted under the current zoning regulations and will have a significant negative impact on the adjacent homeowners and the neighborhood, including noise, traffic, disease, and odor. It is not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood and will clearly interfere with the homeowner's peaceful enjoyment of their homes. A few, just a few points. A great deal of work has already been done on the property. Paving, HVAC systems, addition of really intrusive spotlights. And this indicates that there is an, there is an expectation of a positive go forward on these proceedings. In my opinion, that's presumptuous and premature to do work, to do work ahead of this commission's official approval. This hearing is not just a formality. This is not a done deal and I think you would agree.
Thank you.
That's why we're here. Another point. It feels like, like we've had a lot of iterations and now there's an internal facility seemingly under consideration. But this will still have outdoor needs. The exhaust from the facility will spill out into the surrounding air. It has to go somewhere and we don't know how, what the long-term health implications on well-being would be, especially for people with allergies to dogs and cats. And presumably, an outdoor dumpster will be needed for waste disposal, hence attracting flies. We heard all about the flies in earlier meetings. I won't go there. But I'd like to mention also that the dumpster is currently located on a residential part of the property. As regards to noise, others have raised this and I'm saying the same. Who will be responsible to assure compliance? What will happen when there's 70 dogs barking and we can all hear it? The amendment as proposed would extend changes to multiple locations throughout Fairfield. And, you know, I just think it's a terrible precedent for other homeowners outside of our neighborhood. Finally, the request for this variance has no merit in terms of prior land use or minimal impact on the neighborhood. It seems like this is a request to circumvent zoning relations for a financial benefit to a commercial enterprise. So just to close up, there's no resounding support for this Fairfield, this project from Fairfield residents. 1,100 signed petitions and our continued attendance here tonight and over and over. I urge you to uphold, uphold the law and reject the proposal. There's a lot at stake for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public in person wish to be heard? See anybody over? We can go through repeats, yes. If you've already spoken, what was it, before the second change, you may again speak. I'm sorry, I meant to include you guys in this current where we are. But if you can please, as you ever had a chance to speak, please keep your comments germane to the most recent change. But yeah, feel free to start up. I mean, my thought is to do it in all the people in person, just to, because they're in person. Feel free to start up and then. Right ahead and anybody else, the on deck chair.
Commissioners, there were a few letters of opposition that we checked that did not seem to be uploaded. So we've made copies for all of you and also for Attorney Nuff.
Yeah, if you can just give it to.
Yes, we pass that down.
Right down.
Just to, we just wanted to be thorough. We didn't see them on the website and we wanted to make sure.
That's fine. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jennifer Epstein, 87 Sasko Hill Road. I thank you for allowing me to exercise my right to re-speak on the petitioner's new plans. I previously spoke about the original plan, so I hope speaking this evening meets everyone's approval. I'll try to keep my comments brief and only responsive to the newest variations for spot on and to the specific comments made at the last hearing by Attorney Nuff. As of this moment, it does not appear that the petitioner has withdrawn the outdoor areas completely. So I am mentioning my opposition to the plan as it has been currently presented, but I am also pre-budding any revisions that would be entirely indoors as I do not believe that an indoor-only facility will eliminate the sound of nuisance barking. I had the opportunity to visit Dogtopia. It seems to be a nice enough facility in an area that I can only describe as an apple to the orange of this proposed site. And as you will hear from others this evening, the best-laid plans of noise abatement have not been totally successful. Now to the revised plans as they were presented at the last hearing. The proposed 919 square foot one-dog relief area along with an additional 400 square foot walkway or area in question, we're not sure what it is, which is to be bigger than my very first apartment, whether it be for a Great Dane or a five-pound teacup Yorkie, is said to be only necessary if said dog is determined to not be able to relieve itself indoors. Is there to be a dog-relieving test at the beginning of a visit that determines one's status? I can imagine that if an owner hears this, they will insist that their dog be considered, an outdoor only one. After all, once approved, who will be there counting dogs? If a client from Stanford is using, is used to the services available at that location, don't you think they are going to insist on it if they use the Fairfield location? Again, who's going to know if Dr. Potter bends the rules and allows all boarding dogs to go outside once or twice or three times a day? One thing that I know from experience is that successful multi-office businesses rely on branding and it's very confusing to have one service at one location and a different one at another. We rely on the slogan, "Different location, same great service." Now he can't do that, or can he? Number two. Attorney Nuff has brought up twice that another vet has an outdoor area in a residential zone. And he said, and I quote from the last hearing, "I assume the dogs are left there unattended. I don't know," end quote. Well, since he likes to use the term responsive and wonderful neighbor a lot as it pertains to Dr. Potter, let me shed some light on this responsive and wonderful neighbor we already have that he speaks of. Pre-COVID, the vet in question hosted a once-a-month playdate for newborn vaccinated puppies and their owners so that the dogs could get socialized to other animals and their nervous new parents, like me, could meet, commiserate, and learn some parenting skills. The vet was present at these parties and provided appetizers and refreshments and was there to answer all of our questions, all of this at no charge. Additionally, she allows anyone in the neighborhood who wants, whether they're a client or not, to walk their dogs in this area or sit for a moment and enjoy their coffee while their dogs play. A wonderful and responsive neighbor indeed. Although not pertinent to your decision, since this has been brought up multiple times as a reason to change zoning laws, I thought it only right to address it. Finally, again, twice Attorney Nuff has attempted to defend this change by citing what he believes are more noise impactful businesses to the location than spot on. They include a drive-through, a package store, and a restaurant with outdoor dining. Then he said, and I quote, "I could imagine that the neighbors would have similar objections to those." Seriously, are these other options threats or promises? Any of these would be amazing. From your lips to God's ears, further proof of the tone deafness of the petitioner and his team. After all these weeks and months to again try to paint us as complaining entitled nimby's is so deeply offensive that we are running out of words to describe it. Commissioner, again, it needs repeating. It is a business that involves barking dogs, either outdoors or indoors, that has brought this opposition. No one is afraid of what rightfully could and should go in this area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Wells Dixon. I live at 234 Fairfield Place with my wife and our three kids. I spoke before in opposition to the original proposal and I raised a number of objections, including the inconsistency between the application and the plan of conservation and development and other, of other similar objections. I just want to say, all of those objections still apply equally with respect to where we are now. And I think there's a little bit of uncertainty about where the proposal is now versus what's been put up on the, on the website and so forth. But there is one objection that I referenced last time that I do want to explain a little more fully, given where we are today and given what has been tremendous and almost universal opposition to this. And that is the, the vote threshold that would be required to approve this project. And I referenced in my opposition last time, the fact that two-thirds super majority would be required by law to approve this. And I want to explain that a little bit more, given where we are and given the extent, again, almost universal opposition to, to this, this application. Because I, I, I would find it incredible and I submit unbelievable that this project would be approved over all of the opposition. So let me just say this tonight. The super majority vote requirement is triggered in two ways under Connecticut law. If there is 20% or more opposition from the lots included in the proposed change, and that's the design commercial district, I think we agree on that, all right? There is an alternate way that this super majority threshold is triggered. This is what I want to talk about. And that's where you have more than 20% opposition from the lots within 500 feet in all directions of the property included in the proposal. When we talk about the property included in the proposal, we're talking about the 2269 Post Road property. All right, and I think if you look at the map, it was, that I believe is in the record already. I think you can see without question that there's more than 20% opposition from people within 500 feet. Okay? And I'll just say this as well. The, the two ways, the 20, that the, that the vote threshold, the two-thirds vote threshold is triggered are not the same. They don't, they're not both about the area of the design commercial district. If that were the case, then the statute would be redundant. And you can't interpret a statute to be redundant. You can't interpret it to have provisions that are essentially meaningless. So again, when we talk about the property, we're talking about 2269. And I think it makes sense, I guess the last thing I'll say, it makes sense that the state legislature would require two-thirds majority vote to approve an amendment that would radically upend the entire scheme in this town, which I think, you know, everyone is in agreement with, at least in terms of the current state. And in fact, you know, the larger the change to the town zoning regulations and the more disruption that the change would cause, makes sense, the greater vote threshold would be required. So I just want to make that clear. I'd like that position to be in the record so that there's no question about it.
Just out of utmost caution, because why don't you submit that graphic that you have? Because I don't know if I've seen that in the record.
It's the same map that was submitted except one additional address is highlighted.
I just don't recognize it. Why don't you just assume the red is in opposition within 500 feet?
Correct, and is reflective of the, the petition.
Reflective of the petition, okay. Why don't we just submit it just in case?
Okay, how do I do that?
Give it to, give it to the gentleman right behind you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Question, can you state that statute that has the 20% threshold?
Yes. Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-3, Subsection B. And again, there are two separate ways the super majority vote threshold is triggered. And we're talking about the second one.
Yep.
Where there's a reference to a property, that's the 2269 property, as opposed to the first way, which involves all of the lots within sign commercial district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Any member of the public in person wish to be heard? Are you coming up? Okay. Anybody else who wishes to be heard? There's a chair right underneath this whiteboard, call him the on deck chair.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
My name is Josh Lippman. I live at 300 Half Mile Road in Southport, Connecticut. My wife and children and I actually moved out of this neighborhood about seven years ago. But still, I'm here right now. We've always looked back at this neighborhood as incredibly special. There's something about that quiet nook where it is, so close to the center of town. There's something about the neighborhood and how peaceful it is. And, you know, I remember teaching our, you know, children how to ride their bikes and all the rest there and have plenty of friends who still live in the neighborhood. But when I heard about this, I guess I just, two things hit me pretty hard. The first is the concept of anything taking away from that special nook, especially when it doesn't even seem legally appropriate. it doesn't even seem legally appropriate. But then in addition to that, I started thinking about my own children. You know, one of my children has ADHD, and I think about our house being his library, his office, where he has to do his work. And I've got to say, you know, at the end of the day, as his meds are wearing off, he's working on his homework, if there were dogs barking, I can just imagine potentially even having to leave the home to bring him somewhere quiet. It seems very basic to say that, but I'm a professional tutor for a living. I've tutored in this neighborhood and in all the surrounding neighborhoods and all over the area, and my whole world is about the idea of kids needing to be in the right frame of mind to learn. And I just, I worry about it. There's a certain time of day when the kids come home and they need their space and they need to do their work, work connected to school, and at a certain point that expires, but I just worry about the distraction. I think about it, and it's different. This isn't just one neighbor's dog. This is something much bigger than that, and I just, I wanted to come and share how I felt. I really, I worry about it, and the fact that I don't live in this neighborhood anymore and have him for seven years, but wanted to come back and share this, I just think it'd be a shame for someone to take away from that, and I think it'd be a shame for the potential of that kind of distraction, not just for students who are like my son, but for all students, because truth is, like, everybody needs their space, and if I was working every day in an office space and I had that kind of distraction, I wonder how I would feel too.
Thank you.
I'm Kate Hestori. I live at 175 Sasko Hill Road with my husband and three children. We've lived here since 2011. I'm not only a mom of three, but I'm also a top producing real estate agent in Fairfield, and I concur with Susan that if Spot On's application is granted, property values would be nothing short of decimated. If you don't believe me and Susan, I encourage you to take an informal poll amongst yourselves, your friends, and family. Would they rather live near a dog kennel with up to 77 dogs or literally anything else? My other point has not yet been made. Commissioners, you asked a good question at the last hearing, which deserves an answer, at least an explanation. What if the petitioner agreed to an indoor-only facility? What then is there to oppose? Let's take the example of Dogtopia, because there have been many comparisons over the past weeks. Last Friday, I took it upon myself to reach out to a woman who lives in the apartment building directly above Dogtopia. I spoke with her for nearly an hour, and before I give you some of the details, I'm going to skip to the punchline. She can clearly hear the barking below her all of the time. In fact, one of the first things she told me is that she wears a hearing aid. She has stopped wearing the hearing aid so that the barking becomes less loud. In addition, she plays music, anything she can to drown out the sound, and it never ends. The construction methods simply are not what she was promised. The tenant told me that there is a constant noise of barking, except sometimes when the dogs have naptime in the afternoon. She was told by the leasing office that Dogtopia had tested the noise for 200 dogs, and it would be completely soundproof. However, with only about 30 dogs in the facility, she can still hear them constantly. Commissioners, this confirms all of our fears in the room, that despite what we believe were good faith efforts, you simply cannot prevent nuisance noise from dog barking, period. You may be asking, why haven't there been more complaints regarding Dogtopia? One reason may be that these apartments were placed directly over Dogtopia, our rentals designated as low-income housing. Out of all of the apartments in that building, she told me that the apartments placed directly over Dogtopia are the low-income designated housing units. As you might imagine, the residents are cautious about complaining to management or anyone for fear of losing access to these highly sought-after and very necessary homes for them. The resident told me herself that although the barking is intolerable, she unfortunately has to weigh it against so many other alternatives that she is faced with. This woman is a small business owner in Fairfield and has not been comfortable speaking in public, because, which of course we can understand, why an individual might not want to write a letter or come before this committee and speak publicly, given potential repercussions. However, the resident I spoke to is willing to speak to any of you at any time and speak about her experience. She's willing to speak about the barking level, the noises, the times of day and night that she hears it. Any questions that you have to ask her? Bottom line, all the best-laid plans for Dogtopia did not work. We now have our answer. Even with an indoor-only dog facility, we will still hear the barking. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Please continue to protect the residents of Fairfield.
Any other member of the public in person wish to speak on this application? If there's anybody else, please just come up to the chair just so we can just keep things moving, and once somebody leaves the chair, go back up, you know.
I'm sorry, it was late before. I was at the Work for Festival on the other side of town.
Okay.
All right. So, dear commissioners, I'm a homeowner at 102 Sasko Hill Road on the corner of Sasko Hill and Overhill. I don't know exactly how many feet I am away from, it's from a site, but it's pretty close. I lived in Fairfield for over 20 years with my husband and our two daughters, and we're opposed to this application. I know it has been modified, but I'm opposed to the zoning change, because we're still, with my neighbors, concerned about undue noise, the presence of a large number of dogs being dropped off and picked up, and whether we can even enforce the promise of only one dog at a time being walked on the grounds and other things that have been said at this meeting. I'm also concerned about the impact the zoning change could have on other Fairfield neighborhoods. This could have a negative impact on me, my family, our neighborhood, and I think you've heard a lot from our neighbors and community members about their concerns and how this could disrupt the character of our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is a really lovely place. We've got young children, we've got retirees, people work from home. All of them could be subject to excessive noise or noxious odors. People say it's a good neighborhood, and they usually mean that it's relatively safe and it looks nice, and that's true, but what makes it a really good neighborhood for me is the good neighbors that I have. I have got good neighbors, got close friends in the neighborhood, I've got the ladies at the bus stop, we have a texting chain going on all the time if someone's running late or what's going on with kids. We help each other out. If a car has a flat tire and need to ride across town, you know, these are the people I turn to. We bake each other cookies for the holidays, we spend time in each other's homes, we have playdates for the kids. On Halloween, there's kids running up and down the street into each other's yards. We usually have an open house. We will give to-go cups of wine for the adults if they want. When the schools were closed due to COVID, we set up a miniature first grade with four neighborhood kids operating out of the basement of our home, alternating by month. Now, none of us object to small businesses. A lot of people here are small business owners ourselves, but the local businesses here are also good neighbors. The local restaurants and shops and the service providers are really generous to our community. We all rely on them for ads and dance programs, contributions to schools, silent auctions for PTAs and scouts and soccer teams and nonprofits. I mean, all of these businesses really support our community, and it's a great community. I love that we can walk from our homes to downtown and we can support these businesses. I love that we have a vibrant and thriving area with university students joining the movie theater and restaurants and shops and music venues. Spot On does not seem like it's going to be a good neighbor. It's just very warm to me and to many people here. Good neighbors don't make excessive noise, and they don't, you know, make an unpleasant use of their yards. We have the right to quiet enjoyment of our homes and yards without being subject to nuisances. So Jen Epstein asked me to read about this, because she liked the quotation I've included in my letter, so I guess you'll get to hear it. There's a concept called Chesterton Spence. The writer J.K. Chesterton wrote this about 100 years ago. He said, "In the manner of reforming things, distinct from deforming them, there's one plain and simple principle, a principle which will probably be called a paradox. There exists in such a place a certain institution or law. Let us say, for the sake of simplicity, a fence or gate erected across a route. A more modern type of reformer goes gaily up to it and says, 'I don't see the use of the fence, clear it away.' To which the more intelligent type of reformer will do well to him. If you don't see the use of it, you certainly shouldn't clear it away. Go away and think. Then when you come back and tell me that you do see the use of it, I may allow you to destroy it. So put simply, the analogy is, don't take a fence down until you know the reason why it was put up. Don't rescind a law or a zoning regulation without careful examinations of the reasons for the law or regulation in the first instance. If a law exists to protect residential districts from uses that will harm them, let's not change that law unless we are really sure we can mitigate the harm." And I haven't been convinced that we have an ability to mitigate disharms. In fact, the examples from other nearby towns and at Dogtopia suggest just the opposite. So I strongly encourage the commission to uphold the regulations preventing dog daycares from abutting residential zones out of respect for the local residents, for our good neighborhood, and for the good neighbors all over town. Thank you for your consideration.
Just as a curiosity, how many people in the person still wish to be heard? I see three-ish, that's fine. I was just taking a poll. Right ahead.
I'm Jennifer Loyah. I live at 134 Old Orchard Park. I do not live near this property, and I think it's important to note that. It is the zoning amendment that I vehemently oppose, because this amendment affects neighborhoods across Fairfield, not just its property. Is this a necessary amendment? No, because Fairfield has other areas of town that allow this type of business, but not near residential neighborhoods. Changing our zoning laws to accommodate a developer or a single business is a dangerous precedent to set. The rights of our residents need to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Corwin. I live at 71 South Tolder Road. I actually spoke at the second hearing where I raised the issue of pitch and tone. As someone who worked in the music industry and has sort of mitigated sound issues in the land here in Connecticut, I, you know, spoke to you guys about that. And I just wanted to resubmit my objection to this application in light of the changes that were made. I think that, you know, whether it's Kate talking about Dogtopia, or Tom talking about bringing dogs in and out of the facility, those same issues still exist, and I think that you should really keep that in consideration when you're, you know, reviewing this new application. Also, one thing stood out to me at the last hearing that I attended, because I've been to all of them, and hearing how this application has been improperly filed, I think that was really, that took me aback. Like, I can't even imagine why we're all sitting here, why I've had to come here, I don't know, I've read all these nights out of my free time when they didn't even follow the right process. So I think in light of all those things, you should reject this application and this amendment, and I just wanted to resubmit my objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, I think there was a few other hands I saw. Any other member in person wish to be heard? Come on up, yeah.
You just be real quick.
If anybody else wants to be heard, they can just come up.
Okay, so let us assume 77 dogs can be held in this spot. So let's, my name is Kevin Downey. I live at 138 Fairfield Place.
Thank you.
Thank you. So under the assumption that 77 dogs can be boarded, let's go with 50%. That would take it up to around 39 dogs, okay? So I've had dogs all my life, and I can say, unequivocally say that my dog needs to go out three times a day. So when you have 39 dogs going out three times a day, it's 117 walks per day. Now, for a dog to have enough time to urinate and defecate, I would say that five minutes is adequate. So that is 585 minutes per day. Now, we're talking about each dog being walked, you know, one dog per time. So you go 585 divided by 24 equals, well, you need more time than you have in a day to do exactly what they want to do. It's 24 hours and about two, three eighths to be able to do this. Look, I'm pro-business, I'm a capitalist, I get it. This guy's put his money up, you know, he's got a dream, but you know what, it doesn't work here. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Hi, Adam Goodman, 87, Tusco Hill Road. I spoke earlier after the first iteration, and I'm just going to touch base, fill in a couple loose ends about the new plan. And regarding the map, it is submitted, but it's buried. There's like a 95-page document, and it's on page 75. So I'm glad that it was resubmitted, so you can at least see the neighborhood. There's also two other maps. One is a south of Post Road map showing Husand, as well as the entire town of Fairfield, you know, close to 1,100 signatures. One thing that hasn't really been talked about much, and I, you know, I'm kind of getting the feeling that you're not going to approve something with an outdoor enclosure, but just in case you are, I wanted to just talk about this outdoor enclosure. You know, Attorney Knopf said that there's a rectangle in the northwest of the building that is the sole and lone outdoor area. There's two areas, all right? So here's the northwest corner, I don't need to submit this, you can see it, I highlighted in green. There's a second area down here, right? And so that's 900 or so square feet plus four, it's almost 1,400 square feet of enclosed dog areas, all right? It's just not just one area, it's two areas. Not only that, but there's five gates going in and out of these enclosures, and one of those is really, makes me worried, is that there's a gate to the outdoor, so dogs could come in from the parking spots right into the enclosure, all right? So one thing that he hasn't really kind of, he hasn't really told us is, you know, beyond the main entrance of the hospital, how are dogs coming into this facility? Is there more than one entrance? We don't really know. They haven't submitted a new plan showing the internal configuration of what this is going to look like, and obviously, the plan has changed multiple times, so they have, they're going to have a different flow in there. We haven't seen that yet. Something that, you know, so we live on the corner of Overhill and Sasko Hill Road, and there was a new house built across the street, and, you know, environmentally friendly, you know, it's efficient, yet there's dogs in that house that I can hear barking from inside my house. So I'm just thinking about if it was all indoors, what that would sound like, and I can imagine that they will still be heard from, you know, through the walls, as is indicated by a new video, a new audio that was uploaded to the website recently, of someone who was outside a facility, and you could hear dogs barking through the walls. In terms of, I know you've heard a lot about Dogtopia, you've asked a lot of questions about Dogtopia, so I'm really not going to rehash all these things, but I think it's important to highlight, and I don't know if it's really been discussed, that Dogtopia is just one small little zone, you know, it's just right around Fairfield Metro. It doesn't pervade around the entire town like the DCD is. So obviously, we are very concerned, as many, many people have said, that you build it here and you can build it anywhere, and other neighborhoods, like Attorney Coffin showed in visual representation, other neighborhoods will also be affected. And the last thing I was going to say is, well, there's two more things. One is, it's about this Greenfield Animal Hospital. I know that the commission just recently allowed the Greenfield Animal Hospital to expand, and originally, you guys were concerned that the change would invite other businesses to attempt to build in the same zone. That's exactly what I'm talking about, all right? Chairman Noonan, you said that this change should be more of an exception than a rule, in that the applicant has, and I'm adding positively, impacted the community during this time, and that is the exception. Greenfield Hill Vet, it has established relationship. They've been in the neighborhood a while, they have relationships with the neighbors. Spot On has no relationship to Fairfield, nor its neighbors, and it has not positively impacted the community. Chairman Noonan also said, "In the last application, we had strong public support, except from the adjacent neighbors. That concerned me," he said. "I think it concerned this commission. They were the ones that were going to be most readily affected. They are now on board with the amendments that have been proposed." Spot On has no public support. We've heard two people speak in favor of Spot On, only one of them was a resident. So there's no public... So there's no public support from adjacent neighbors and there's very little support from the general public in, you know, at all, in general. There's really no support. Maybe some people will speak after me. So, um, I just, I just wanna end with, um, you know, our neighborhood does not wanna be the test case for how this is going to work in the DCD if we allow, um, if we allow commercial dog boarding and that the, you know, the current zoning regulation is working and there's no reason to change. So thank you very much.
Any other member of the public in person wish to be heard? I'm just gonna, otherwise, I'm gonna go to the, uh, remote people. Doesn't necessarily end your chance, but just trying to keep this orderly. Seeing nothing, we'll turn to...
We have two people online. We have Enrico Cactori and then we have Hannah Cho.
Mr. Cactori, I apologize.
No problem. Can you hear me okay?
Can hear you, sir.
Great. Uh, Enrico Cactori, 175 Sasko Hill Road, three kids. You heard, um, my wife speak passionately as a Realtor and as a mom and, and part of the community. Um, I wanna talk about something. I didn't plan on doing this, so there's no script here. Um, it's coming from the heart. It's coming from the gut. And as you heard, this community is not obstructionist. We're really, uh, a people of change for better, right? And that's the key thing here. Uh, I, I can't, you know, I can't do better than all the details, the, the common sense that, that this doesn't fit. And there's no path forward. What I'm gonna talk about is coming from the military, uh, we're guided in a situation where there's, there's a sixth sense that's our most powerful weapon that we have, right? And that's called, it's basically our risk meter. It's our senses. And our senses right now are telling us, this does not fit. We should not do this. There is no path forward. And the reason why our senses are being used, because most people don't use this anymore because we live quality life, is because people's lives are at stake. Their biggest asset, their home, is at risk. Their livelihood, if they work, you know, work at night or they have children with disabilities that, that are impacted. And the risk here is too high, not only for this neighbor, but for this community. And it should not fit. We, we have to remember, this town was an industrial town. We used to have an, a battery plant across the street, right? We can't, we can't change the, the, the space there for the owner. I sympathize with the, the landowner and the desperation. And I understand Mr. Putter putting up a lot of money and, and trying to fit the curve, find a way just to get into the property. Once he's got the lease, he can do whatever he wants, right? Because you can hear that. There's no controls, right? It becomes us against Mr. Putter. Uh, this town is, is built fabric that's about community and diversity. There's some people here, you know, in this community, they've lived here many years and, you know, economically cannot just decide to relocate. And so we have to really respect that. And any of these, uh, these zoning changes, for what? The risk associated is really too high. You know, this community is, is real Americans coming together. And I think one of the, the benefits of this happening is the power that, that this community, um, achieved by coming together to fight something that does not do better for our community. And, you know, I really wanna thank everyone here. Um, we have a special community and I know you have hard jobs and I know you're gonna do what's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I missed the, I forget the next name. Hannah Choey?
Hi, it's Hannah Choey. Hannah Choey, yes. Hi, thank you. Uh, yes, my name is Hannah Choey and I live at 155 Godfrey Road, which is a residential neighborhood in the Stratfield area of town. Um, we live on a half-acre lot and it's surrounded by five houses on similarly sized lots. So there's three behind us, offset, and then two on either side. And we've been living here since 2015. And until last summer, um, from when we moved in until last summer, every house neighboring ours had a dog. And, um, and one neighbor in particular would allow her dog to bark outside unattended for hours and, and often into the nighttime. And her dog's barking would cause this domino effect of all the other neighborhood dogs. So we were surrounded by dogs barking in response to her dog. And it was, it was really frustrating. And we, and we had a dog. Our dog is not, well, she passed away, but she wasn't a barker, luckily. But it was really hard because at night, it would be, there would be barking and we'd try to sit on the back deck and we'd just be surrounded by barking. And she moved last year and it changed everything. I mean, everything. We can sit outside in the backyard now without this cacophony of dogs around. And, um, it's quiet and it's restful and it doesn't drive me crazy. And so I just, I just, it just makes me think, if there's one dog outside barking, I have seen that it does cause other dogs in the neighborhood to bark. And I just, the idea of that happening all day is, um, is stressful for me and I live on the complete opposite side of town. And so I, thank you very much for listening to me and I ask you to please keep the current zoning regulations as they are so that, um, people can enjoy their backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that's joining us remotely or by telephone that wishes to be heard? If you're using your telephone, please press star six, one, mute yourself. Nobody else is in the chat, Ms. Aragon? Does any member of the public wish to be heard, either in person or via remote or telephone? Okay, last call, which is fine. Okay. So I'll end the public comment portion of this application. As I said, um, the applicant will give his, give its rebuttal the next hearing, which is the sec, what is it?
3/28.
3/28, uh, same time, same place. So that being the last portion of our agenda, I will, the, the application here and the hearing remain open for rebuttal, but tonight's hearing is closed or adjourned, however you wanna say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I was tempted to bet your money on that.